Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Jackson Public School District July 12th Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Thank you very much for being here. Our business this evening will begin with... With our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be provided by the Elementary Division, Dr. King will introduce our student.
Great afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is my pleasure to introduce Jaleah Richardson. Jaleah Richardson is a 4th grade scholar at George Elementary School. She is the daughter of Jasmine Richardson and Roscoe Stapleton. Jaleah was fortunate to have Board Member Mr. Jed Oppenheimer as a reading mate during her 3rd grade year at George Elementary. Jaleah's hobbies include dancing, watching TV, playing teacher, and playing with her dolls. After graduating high school, Jaleah plans to attend the Jackson State University to begin her studies to become a doctor. Ladies and gentlemen, Jaleah Richardson.
Good evening. My name is Jaleah Richardson. I am a... Good evening, my name is Jaleah Richardson. I am a 4th grade scholar at George Elementary School. Will you please stand to recite the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, a liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jaleah, if you will stay for a second. Guess who's coming to say congratulations to you, our colleague, Mr. Oppenheimer.
So, the cat is out of the bag. I was lucky enough to be Ms. Richardson's reading mate this year. She was an absolutely amazing student, a blessing to be able to go every week and work with her as she built her literacy skills that George Elementary was already very much working with her on. I was always amazed to come and come on by and get your energy and your literacy work, you know, done and all that kind of stuff, and also to hear all the stories about what goes on in the life of an amazing 3rd grader. So, we thank you for coming and give the pledge. Can you introduce your family and your principal?
My principal is Ms. Thomas.
Ms. Thomas, would you stand? Thank you.
My mom is Jasmine Richardson. My grandma is Mary Stehman.
And as we know, the amazing support system that makes all of our young people thrive in this community is always necessary and always amazing, and thank you. And thank you for pushing me to be a better reading mate. And person. So, Mr. Johnson's gonna take a photo of us.
Jaleah, if you'll come back for a second.
Thank you, Jaleah.
Thank you. We're awfully proud of our students.
Jaleah is the best 3rd, 4th grader in the district, I'm just saying.
I got ya. It's okay to be biased today. Our next order of business is a prayer of invocation, which will be provided by Reverend Leonard Jenkins, but who will be introduced by our colleague, Dr. Richard Lynn. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Okay. Reverend Leonard Jenkins was born and raised in Tifton, Georgia. He is a graduate of Cook County Training High School in Adele?
Adele.
Adele, excuse me, Georgia. He received his Bachelor of Arts degree in education from Jackson State University and a Master's of Theology degree from Wesley Baptist Seminary here in Jackson. Reverend Jenkins accepted his call into the ministry and was licensed to preach the gospel under the pastoral of Dr. Jerry Young, his spiritual leader and pastor of New Hope Baptist Church. Reverend Leonard Jenkins has served in the U.S. United States Navy and received an honorable discharge at the end of his service. Upon his arrival to Jackson, Mississippi, he became employed at the Davis Planteorium as programs coordinator until retiring in the year 2000. Additionally, Reverend Jenkins has served the Jackson community as a part-time police officer and with the Jackson Police Department. Excuse me. Reverend Jenkins now serves as one of five Associate Ministers at New Hope Baptist Church under the leadership of Reverend Dr. Jerry Young, pastor, who is also President of the National Baptist Convention, USA Inc. He is married to Ms. Tommy Lockhart Jenkins, and together they have actively engaged in the Home Builders Ministry, a marriage strengthening ministry. He and his wife are the proud parents of five adult children. Reverend Jenkins is committed to exalting Christ and embarrassing the community with care, embracing, embracing the communities with care and compassion. Reverend Jenkins, Reverend Jenkins, I would embarrass myself of the Lord any day of the month. So, thank you so much.
We thank you. Let us pause for a moment of silence just for our nation, which is in turmoil. Now let us pray. Lord God, we come this day seeking to mess your guidance, your wisdom, and your support, Demester. We come, dear God, thanking you for this board. We thank you, dear God, for Jackson Public School and all of its faculty, board members, teachers, and students, oh God. We pray that you continue to embrace them with your love and with your care. God, we just pray that your mercies will shine upon each student, that they will do their very best to learn, and we pray that you will give this board the support that the teachers need, the staff need, as well as its faculties. God, we pray that you will bless us, keep us, because wisdom, knowledge, and learning is one of the four most important things we will do, other than learning to know you as Lord and personal Savior. We pray that you continually bless this board for what it stands for, and bless the administration for which you have given it the fortitude to go forward to conduct school ministry and school mission for the Jackson Public School District. We thank you, we give you praise and honor for an opportunity just to come and stand before such distinguished men and women. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Jenkins. If you will stay for a second in the front here, Reverend Lynn would like to provide you with a token of appreciation.
Reverend, I want to stand up here, because you're taller than me. Thank you, I think you are. Let's see. No, we can do this together then, okay. Once again, what an awesome prayer. We are so thankful for those words of prayer, deeply from the soul of your body, we felt that, and we thank you for that. God knows we need prayer. And don't stop praying for this country and this city, the state, and especially the Jackson Public School District. We thank you for keeping us in your prayer. Now, on behalf of the Jackson School Board and our very own Superintendent, we want to present this small token to show our appreciation for your fine words of encouragement. So, on behalf of that, we present this to you.
Thank you, Reverend Jenkins. Is Mrs. Jenkins here with you today? Is Mrs. Jenkins here? Okay. Thank you very much for coming, Reverend Jenkins, as a member of... Several of us in this room attend the same churches for which Reverend Jenkins is Associate Pastor, so thank you very much. We now have the establishment of a quorum. We have, we have four of our members present, and we are joined by Ms. Camille Sims, who's on our telephone. Good evening, Ms. Sims. Is she there? Ms. Munford?
She was.
Okay.
I talked to her, but I'll re-dial.
Okay. Thank you. So, we will proceed. Our next order of business is the adoption of the agenda.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, if you would, we have one adjustment to the agenda. Item, Consent Agenda Item, Personnel Item B should be placed under Information/Action Item as Item B.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Oppenheimer.
Thanks, Ms. Bird. I just have a question under how we're gonna show Item 7, Information Items Only Review of Revisions, the policies listed below, how we will show that in our minutes if it's not listed here? I know there's probably 20 of them or more.
About 50.
50.
Yes.
Maybe I was scrolling through real fast.
I promise you, it's more than 50, really.
How would we show that in the minutes if it's not listed here?
We will, we can do an addendum that lists all of them. Actually, I think if Ms. Munford just lists the, includes the executive summary. The executive summary lists all the policies that are before the board.
Cool. So, do we need to, when we take a vote for the agenda, say, to include the addendum from the policy executive?
You can do that. The executive summary actually should already be a part of your board material, but for the clarity of the, just the agenda, you can make that as a motion.
Entertainer motion.
So, I'll move to accept the agenda with the addendum under Item 7 for the executive summary of the policies to be included.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the agenda, including the policies and procedures that are part of the executive summary. Any questions, those in favor? Ms. Sims?
Ms. Sims? Yes. Did you give a motion? Yes. You vote in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now to the reading and approving of the minutes of the June 21st, 2016 Special Meeting. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We're down to the review of appealed and non-appealed discipline cases, Dr. Knox.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, there are none this evening. Thank you, Dr. Knox.
Thank you. We're now down to the reading and approving of the minutes of the June 21st, 2016 Meetings, Special Meeting, the June 21st Regular Meeting, and the June 23rd Special Meeting for the Budget, for Budget Approval. Entertainer motion?
So, move. Say.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the reading and approval of the minutes as stated earlier. Questions, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're now down to public participation.
Board members, I have no one who's signed up for public participation.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Gray.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, good evening to all who have gathered here today. If you would, please, I wanted to iterate Reverend Jenkins' sentiment in providing a moment of silence as we begin for those affected by the recent tragedies across our country and in our state. Thank you. As I begin each evening's Superintendent's announcements also begin with a introduction, so I've adjusted that introduction, and it is as follows. The vision of the Jackson Public School District is to have high-achieving schools for high-achieving scholars that are physically and emotionally safe. The wildly important goals of Jackson Public Schools are to increase academic achievement, to increase average daily attendance for scholars and staff, and to attract and retain high-quality staff. Our mission, we are building stronger schools together to have every scholar, every day, ready for life. Ladies and gentlemen, these are your announcements. Summer Feeding Program, the Jackson Public School Food Service Department for free, the Jackson Public School Service Department, Free Summer Reading Program is still, did I say reading? Summer Feeding Program is still underway for children 18s and under. The program lasts until July 15th and is part of the district's effort to address the hunger needs of thousands of students across the summer months. The serving time is from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. A list of 2016 Summer Feeding Program sites is available on the JPS website. For more information, please contact JPS Food Service Department at 601-960-8911. Online registration. Online registration for new and returning scholars is now underway. Parents and guardians must visit their child's school to begin registration. Parents or guardians must take an initial visit, make an initial visit to the school in their attendance zone to begin the online registration process. Parents can locate their child's school attendance zone by contacting the JPS Office of Enrollment Services at 601-960-8852. Completing online registration requires access to a computer with a connection to the Internet. Computer labs are available and set up at each school for parents who do not have access to a computer. Schools will be open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and schools will be closed for lunch break from 11:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. Hours will be extended each Thursday until 6:00 p.m. to accommodate parents in the late afternoons. Summer reading. Parents and students, please don't forget about the JPS Summer Reading Requirements. All students can read and have lunch at the same time, so come to the Summer Lunch Feeding Program and read. All students are required, that's what my head was, all students are required to read at least three books and complete a log for each one. Each student must read and write a log for the one required book title from the list on the webpage. Students must choose two additional titles from any source on any topic and write a log on each. For maximum benefit and incentives, students are encouraged to read many, many books. Mississippi Sales Tax Holiday. The Mississippi Sales Tax Holiday 2016 begins at 12:01 a.m., Friday, July 29th, 2016, and ends at midnight, Saturday, July 30th, 2016. It applies only to clothing and shoes and is intended to coincide with the parent's annual back-to-school shopping efforts. Isabel Elementary School receives a major grant to expand technology in classrooms. With Dr. Micah Knox, the principal of Isabel Elementary School, and Mr. Stephen George, Executive Director of IT Services, please come forward. Or Stephen?
He doesn't want to come.
Oh, he's always playing the background. Come on up. Would you give him a hand, please? Celebrate them as they come. The Mississippi Department of Education's Office of Technology and District Transformation announced Isabel Elementary as a recipient of the Digital Interactive Learning Grant of $70,400. The $1 million set aside for the program was distributed among 15 schools across the state based on a competitive application process. Schools with the highest scores were awarded grants in varying amounts. This grant will greatly assist with improving, improve the overall, overall technology infrastructure of Isabel and increase the school's digital readiness. It will also provide scholars with more innovative and engaging instruction. Isabel Elementary is one of the district's schools of promise. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, let's celebrate Dr. Knox, Mr. George for this wonderful accomplishment.
Wonderful.
And as is my intention going forward, as you can see, a note on our agenda, an update on our agenda, we are going to dedicate time at least once per month updating our board on wildly important goals, and so I do have some information to share with you, members of the board. We have received late last night the final grade, accountability rating grades for the Park Assessment over a year ago. And so I have for your consideration these documents. All right, if you'd allow me to just really quickly walk you through what you have once you receive it. On the top, you have 2013-14 Accountability Letter Grades. This is one, two, three years ago, all right? The second page is the Park Waived Results. So, the waiver applied for the district. And on it, you will note that Clausell, French, Raines, Wolfher Heights, Peoples, and Witten came out of the F category. I think that's what we're celebrating. So, even with the Park as difficult as it was, it was extremely difficult for many of our schools across the state, and the waiver, we were able to pull several of our schools out of that, out of that category. Two things to note about this is extremely important to us going forward. First is, we feel we have the system in place that helps pull the lower-performing schools out of that category. The second thing is, we have to also pay very, very close attention on how our current top-performing schools are performing, so that they don't slip. In all transparency, I'm always giving you good, bag and ugly, we had some top performers at the Park two years ago that slipped, and you'll see some of that in there. The third sheet and the fourth sheet are 2014 results with and without waiver, and the middle column would be 13, 14 results two years ago. And on this last sheet, the celebration we're enjoying now, we will retool, re-kick very soon. The current test we just took in May, we expect some very raw data coming back in the next couple of weeks, and the accountability results for that will be released, I anticipate, I think, September. The results you have in your hand right now are currently embargoed, and the State Department of Education will receive these and review them and approve them Thursday. Please be mindful, though, this is two years ago. This is the Park data from two years ago. Okay. And let me just read as we wrap this part up, something from the State Department regarding This is from the State Department. It says, "The accountability results for 2014-15, based on Park Assessment, will be released on Thursday at the State Board of Education meeting. The results will be released to the media today under embargo," so that we may, if you're receiving calls, this is the reason for that. We have, I have given you the final report that will be given to the board, State Board, coming up this week. Additionally, what this is, what I wanted to point out was what I just mentioned. What it says here is, "I've attached some talking points that you can personalize for your district. Some of you will note that letter grades did drop when you examined the grades without the waiver. That is a good forecast for what is to come when the MAP Accountability is released in October." We're going to, we're going through the standard-setting process for those test scores this month. So, we have preached and preached and preached over the last several months that there could possibly be some drop in performance. The state has echoed that very same sentiment, but according to a member of the state, there are also some optimism leading into MAP, because as you remember, the Park Assessment window was, was difficult for many states. It was our first shot at it, as we always, as we're always noting, okay?
So, this is embargoed until?
Until Thursday.
Thursday of this week?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, yes.
Thank you. Madam President, Senator Gray. It seems that the, two years ago, number actually grew in terms of D?
Yes.
Rated schools?
Yes.
What happened?
The Fs became Ds.
Right, I understand that, but when we look at it from a realistic standpoint, a D and a F, there's no difference in terms of what type of rate. So, I guess my question is, what in your, the data that's been presented has presented itself to show where we would grow in the number of schools that?
Well, the growth we enjoyed was from eight Fs to two, and it's two years ago, so we didn't have this information until recently. We couldn't do anything with it at all last year.
Okay.
So, it's really in, and in three months, we'll be looking at another set of data that's more recent.
Okay.
Right. So, and for all intents and purposes, this is the reason the state applied a waiver, because this was two, this is two years ago data.
Okay.
But, but, but your point is well-taken in that we have grown, though, from as many as we had to fewer, and so it's gonna more, it's gonna populate the D and C more.
Okay.
But that's also lending to the two points I made. One was, we have a formula in place to increase the performance of those schools that are performing in the F level, but we also have to make, the second point, take a closer look at the schools that are performing well to make sure they don't slip.
Okay. So, we anticipate, then, with this information here, that the Ds that are listed in this area here will be progressed enough to see?
That's what we're anticipating.
Okay.
Now, you have to understand this, that was Park two years ago, a completely different test, and so the map we just took would be another new, completely different test.
Okay.
Right.
I understand the test for, I understand the change in the, in the delivery.
Okay.
However, the question we have is, based on, on the assessment and review of all the mechanisms put in place, will we be positioned to move these Ds to Cs? That's kinda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Because we have moved the number of Fs to D, so we went from 17 to eight to two in the midst of changing several different tests, so we feel like we've got the right formula in place for improving lower-performing schools. What we have to do now is make sure that our higher-performing schools don't slip, and that's exactly part of the plan.
Good.
Ms. Oppenheimer?
Thanks, Madam President, Dr. Gray.
Thanks, Madam President, Dr. Gray. And I definitely echo my colleague, Mr. Jones, over here in those questions. I am curious, is there any way of reading this as a sign of potentially moving up to a C district? Because I know last year, or the last time, we were, we were just below it.
Yes, sir. Well, the, I think that's what the state's memo meant, was that because of how, how difficult the process of Park was, we may recall that it was literally sixty days of testing. We started right after our scholars got back from spring break in mid-March, all the way to the end of May. And there were so many adjustments and changes, and that the test itself even raised questions about, you know, the process followed. That because MAP was a lot smoother in its launching and in the preparation for it, that they're anticipating some growth in that. So we, we are looking forward to the continued growth. It's difficult to determine that right now, because it's a new test. You know, I know we keep saying that, but that's important for us to emphasize. But we've spent, you know, the entire school year working on this. So we're, we're hopeful for a closer shot at, at a higher rating for the coming school year. Now, just this last point of emphasis, that this part is two years ago. That's important, because, you know, although those grades are recently, just recently come out, it's from a test that took a while back.
All right.
And that is it. I have a couple of items for other business, but we'll move forward. That will conclude the superintendent's announcements and updates.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Information items only. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Ms. Burt. Dr. Gray, members of the board, you have before you approximately fifty, maybe sixty policies that the staff and administration recommend changes to. These are policies that affect instruction, closing schools due to bad weather, asthma medication, other policies such as shared governance, which may be outdated. So in this recommendation, you will, well, in this review, you will have policies that are recommended for deletion, and policies that are, I'm sorry, revised, and some policies actually stay the same. So we will place these policies out in the board, in the board purview for the revised section of the policy manual, and then bring them back to you later this month for approval.
Ms. Duncan.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for this. And I know it's probably a pain with so many different policies, and I, and I asked a question beforehand about, in my questions beforehand, about were these the policies specifically listed in the audit? I know through the audit, a number of policies were very specifically identified, and I'm just curious why we couldn't get those ones immediately?
Some, some of these are, some of these are. We're still going through the audit to make sure that the corrections are made. Some of these are certainly the ones that were listed in the audit, but also, some of the audit findings that we had, actually, when we went back through, we have those policies. They are just in different places in the policy manual, such as the requirement for licensure of employees. We have a policy that requires that, because the law actually says you cannot issue a contract without a license. So these are, these are policies that the audit said that we needed to make sure were consistent between the policy manual and the handbook. And so while they were not, all of them were not specifically named in the audit, what the administration wanted to do in preparation for the printing of the student handbook was to have the, the policies that affect kids consistent in both places, so that we could print the handbook for, for students when school starts.
And then, and then, thank you for that. And then after that, whatever outliers would be coming in front of us pretty, pretty soon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I am, I was particularly happy to see all the policies, because they are very important. And I hope that once we have updated them, that there are opportunities for us, and maybe board will take leadership on meeting in the communities with our various constituencies, to really kind of just talk about them. Because I know that many of them are from just really years and years ago, and I must admit, you know, I didn't know some of them, because they happened prior to my being on the board. But I think that it would be wonderful for parents in our entire community to rehash all of these, and for, for new parents coming into the system, to know what we're talking about, and to know what we're all operating on. So members, I want to hope that the board will help me take leadership on this, and try to have some of these close community conversations with, about policies that have been updated, things that need to be changed, and just question, so that the community understands every policy on which we are operating. And it gets to be a little different when you're reading it in the book, as opposed to me having a conversation with you next to a table, and just kind of talking about it. And so that people kind of intuitively know what it actually means once a policy is applied, they'll be able to do it. And I hope, I know this is more work, but I hope that we will have these, you know, in a written form, so that parents can read them, and then even come back with questions about them for clarification, so that going forward, then we will, we will continue with that. And please don't stop until all of them are updated, and that we, we go forward with new policies. And, and I hope that we are paying extra attention to when a policy needs to be revised, that it gets revised at that point. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Duncan?
Sorry, Madam President, your comments made me think of another question.
Oh, that's quite all right.
So I apologize. But it made me think specifically about the anti-bullying policy that's in there, and knowing that there's the investigation form and whatnot. I'd be really curious, especially as we're reviewing it, what data we have on how many of those investigations have been done? Because I know, I'm sure, most of the educators in here, and parents and guardians and us have gotten calls about my child's being bullied, I've talked to blah, blah, blah. I'd be curious to know if that process is being followed, because I think that can inform how we look at specifically the anti-bullying policy would be really helpful.
Absolutely. Okay. So there's no action required on this, this is information items, an information item only will come back to us for action. Board members, I hope that we're able to, like, really read them, if we have not read them thoroughly now, so that we can really act on them at the next meeting. Okay. We're now down to information, action items, where we've included item B. Dr. Gray?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, approval of the JROTC instructor job description. Ms. Lyons is going to assist us with that tonight, and if you have any questions. Ms. Miller's out today.
What? Good evening.
The world stops spinning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Gray, President Burden, Board President Burden, and members of the board. The administration requests the board, the approval of the JROTC instructor non-call share and job description.
Questions? Yes, Ms. Duncan?
Okay. Thanks, Madam President. Thanks so much for being with us, Ms. Lyons. Quick question. Oh, sorry. The question is about the money, and where the money's coming from. This is a position that already existed?
Yes, sir, that's correct. This is, I don't want, but it was a retirement that we're feeling.
Okay. And then typically, how much percent wise or whatnot of our JROTC funds are, are the district paying for? Because I understand we get a, a good sizable, I guess, grant from the folks for JROTC. Do we have a sense?
Ms. Purnell may be able to help us a little bit more. Dr. Murray, please.
This is the last time Ms. Miller can be absent.
Dr. Gray, board members.
It's over for her.
Good evening, Dr. Gray, board members. With JROTC, we call share, but there is a new policy that they have, they only allow two instructors, so they don't backfield. And so what happens, if they don't backfield, then that's students that can't take JROTC. So this position is a retiree that they're not backfilling, that we're going to pick up, that we want to pick up as the district, a hundred percent, which will allow us to keep that program in place at that site.
So it's a retirement of somebody who was being paid from a different?
Call share, fifty fifty.
From the cost share, fifty fifty?
Yes, sir.
And now we're picking up that other fifty percent and making it a hundred percent?
Yes, sir.
And where, where does this particular position fit into, I guess, the JROTC tree?
Just the JROTC instructor.
At, at like a?
At a school, I'm sorry. I think it's ProVon, it's just the, an instructor that we're losing, we're just replacing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That, our JROTC program is one of the finest ones that we have, and the young people who participate are just absolutely excellent. I wish we could expand it across our entire system. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve action item B, under information, action items. I think that was item A. I'm sorry, item A.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, those are, I'm sorry.
Item A, what's that?
Item A, yes. Those in favor? Ms. Sams?
Yes, I.
Thank you.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, the approval of the compliance coordinator, exceptional education job description. Ms. Lyons available for questions? We moved it from, we moved it from consent agenda items personnel. It's B, it's?
Oh, yes. Entertain a motion for approval of the compliance coordinator of exceptional education.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the compliance coordinator's job description. Questions? I'm sorry?
I do. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes?
Is this a position that was discussed earlier, you know, in terms of someone coming in to make sure that, that everything was compliant? Yes, sir, absolutely. Checking compliance. Thank you.
Other questions? Those in favor? Thank you. Now, we are down to consent agenda items finance.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Entertain a motion for approval of A, B, and C, and then we'll talk about the donations in C.
Second.
Questions, Mr. Jones?
I have a question, yes. Item thirty-six nine three zero eight, that's the, the uniform for bands? Is that, is this where we are? Okay. Is that for, for all the, oh, she left? Ms. Ms. Miller's album, that's Ms. Purnell's, okay. It's, it's, it's the band, Ms. Dr. Dr. Murray. Ms. Purnell will support you, or whomever can take that one. Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, go ahead with your question. Thirty-six nine three zero eight, that's the band? Is that, how, how many schools will be outfitted with that, with that purpose? I see it was going, how many bands were that?
Us one, one band.
Which, which band is that?
It depends, it's on a rotating cycle. Last year, Jim Hill received band uniforms, so each year, we, you know, we choose a band on a rotating cycle. And I'm not sure, I'd have to look at the information.
Jim?
Well, oh, this is for Jim Hill.
Okay, all right. And then there was another with the thirty-six nine four five one, the independent roofing, how's that going? Thirty-six nine four fifty-one.
What is your question, Mr. Jones?
No, I was asking, I noticed we have a payout to independent roofing. I was wondering how did they, I know there were some questions in reference to a previous roofing job that we had, and I just wanted to see, was this here satisfied to our, to the contract or what have you? Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
You could say it is.
Okay.
If they, if they submitted anything to us for us to pay, then it should have been fulfilled.
Okay. And then also thirty-six nine four fifty-two, kind of that repayment of grant, what, what is that about?
Okay, now I can't answer that one. The repayment of the grant, there were some funds under the Title I, that was reported under fifteen expenditures, and then they should have been under sixteen. So what we did was, we refunded the funds back, and then we requested them under the new grant, which is sixteen.
Okay.
So that's all it is.
So it should be a wash?
It is a wash.
Okay, all right. And there's one other. The thirty-six nine four six two, the Venture Technology for, four forty? I know there's a couple in there for, that was well over. How was it? Three six nine four six two.
Do you have a page number?
Yeah.
I have an amount.
Your page number, on which page is on? Do you have the amount?
I can, I can provide it to you after, just after the belonging meeting, I can provide it to you afterwards. That's okay. Twenty thirty-one? Okay. Twenty thirty-one, page twenty thirty-one? Twenty of thirty-one, okay. I'm looking at my, my iPad, I'm working some kind of.
What was the amount?
Four hundred and forty-seven seven eight. The item number is three six nine four six two.
Three six nine four six two?
I'll, I'll provide it to you, you can just get it to.
That's not in that one.
There it is, there it is.
Right there, did you see it?
Let's try to find it.
Okay.
Oh. You said three six nine?
Four six two.
That's not Venture Technology, that's Burgess Homes, T R R.
Okay, maybe I wrote it down wrong. Anyway, the Venture Technology one for a major check, I was wondering, I guess they were doing wiring in the middle schools?
Yeah, had to be.
Okay, so, yeah, there are several of those. The first line item said, I'm sorry. One of the things that we had brought to you is a five-year plan for wireless throughout the entire district, high schools, middle schools, elementary. The project for the high schools have been complete as of this fiscal year, I'm sorry, this calendar year, last fiscal year, we paid for a good number of the thirteen middle schools to be completed prior to August fourth. And that has begun, and they're nearing completion, but that was a multifaceted process, because there were some other things that had to be in place before they could be cabled. So if this is regarding the middle school wireless project, that's something that is nearing completion.
Okay. And so will it be rated by August fourth?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
For the schools that we did pay for, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll hear reading of the various donations.
To Assistant Dr. Gray, President Burke, Bert, and the um members of the board, the administration has requested approval to accept the donations of, first one is French Elementary School. They receive one Epson all-in-one printer valued at fifty dollars. Isabel Elementary, Elementary School, one thousand dollar for technology enhancements, scholar and adult recognition incentives, supplies, awards, et cetera, from Spectral Energy. Energy for Alicia Hudson of Jackson, Mississippi. Power Apex Visual Arts Digital Camera valued at three hundred dollars from Martha Hamburg for E E F funds for use by the visual arts students. Open Doors, one Rio H D LED three projector valued at, valued at one hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. One uh F A V I Entertainment Projector valued at two hundred and fifty dollars and one In-Force L C D uh projector and carrying case valued at three hundred dollars, all from a Junior League of Jackson Mini Grant. One A X A LED uh project, project projector valued at a hundred and eighteen dollars from E E F funds. One Epson printer valued at two hundred dollars from E E F funds. Northwest Middle School on Brinkley Middle School, one thousand dollars each for technology enhancements, scholar and adult recognition incentives, supplies, awards, et cetera, from Spectral Energy of Jackson, Mississippi. Northwest Middle School, a thousand dollars from Walmart in Bentonville, Arkansas. Arkansas for proper implementation of the P B I S reward system. Northwest Middle School, thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents from Target in Minneapolis, Minnesota, soda for proper implementation of the P B I S reward system. Northwest Middle School, two hundred and eleven dollars cash from Ashley Molden to assist the cheerleaders travel for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. Um these are the recommendation, the uh donations that we're asking for approval of.
Thank you. Once again, we certainly thank our community partners for all that you do and the contributions that you make to help our kids and our, our students uh in our schools to be uh better students. Thank you very much. We are always, always so appreciative of community partners thinking of us and how we got the target in Minnesota is very interesting. But we are so appreciative of that. Thank you, community partners. I'll entertain a motion now.
Second.
Do we have one already? Okay. So those in favor?
Ms. Sims?
Ms. Sims?
She said, she's off.
Okay. All right. Now to consent agenda items general.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, we have consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N.
Board members, are there items that you would like to discuss individually? Mr. Oppenheimer?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. Items B as in boy and C as in curriculum.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for all items with, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry?
Question about D, it doesn't, this is a general question about I D.
You wanna go forward and then ask a question during that time?
Please.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the consent agenda items general uh with the exception of B and C.
Some more.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we adopt consent agenda items A, D, E, F, G, H, I. Any questions?
J, K, L.
I'm sorry.
M, N.
J, K, L, M, N. Um Mr. Jones, you had a question?
Yes. On, with the Frog Street press, how, how do we feel that they will be, what are they gonna bring, how are they gonna assist our teachers and students in moving forward with, with, you know, with their program?
Yes sir, good question. Yes sir. If you don't mind, Dr. Webber?
Yes sir. Good evening, Dr. Gray, Madam President, members of the board.
Dr. Webber?
We went through a very intensive and detailed process in selecting Frog Street. First of all, we did a competitive bidding process where nine vendors actually responded to the R F P. We invited all nine vendors here to do a job fair. Each vendor had a thirty-minute presentation in which they had an opportunity to present their product, their research, their results, et cetera. Of those nine vendors, three of them stood out that we really wanted to look at really closer. So we had another round of, of interviews and um, and to decide upon the vendor. So Frog Street won, in our mind, we felt that Frog, Frog Street had the most competitive um R F P or proposal because of three things. The um, the curriculum was very children-friendly. The curriculum had a great professional development component, and they also had an assessment piece. What we have not done well in the district and we are really, really working to improve is our evaluation piece, our assessment piece. And with pre-K not being a mandated program, we felt that it was crucial that we not reinvent the wheel with the assessment piece to gauge where our children are. And Frog Street actually has a rich history with early childhood. Their um company was actually started by kindergarten teachers looking for materials to help engage our young learners on emotional, social, E L A, math, science, all of the things that build a strong pre-K curriculum. So as you know, with the pre-K, our early learners, you're doing so much more than just the, the reading and the writing. We're teaching them emotional skills, we're teaching them social skills, we're teaching them coordination, we're teaching them a plethora of things to prepare them for kinder. So with this curriculum, we felt that it was comprehensive. We felt that it did a really great job in preparing our children for the kindergarten component. And with them having uh an online, a person here locally and just with the rich history of the, of the company. And let me just give you another example. Tupelo, Tupelo received a lot of federal funds, not as many as we do, but they see, receive a large piece of federal dollars. They used the bulk of their Title I funds for their pre-K piece. And this is one of the curriculums that they've used. So we looked at what other districts were doing, and Jackson has not, um, we've not invested in our pre-K curriculum in over ten years. We've been piecemealing pieces together, and it, it wasn't fair to our children. So what we decided to do, the leadership decided to do was we, this is the opportunity to really invest in our pre-K program. So we put the monies, it was a sacrifice, but we felt it was crucial, and I'm speaking so passionately about this because we're so passionate about these young babies. And we really put a lot of, of time into this to decide upon the perfect curriculum for our children. So long story short, we felt that Frog Street had all of the components that we were looking for in order to ensure that we are preparing our pre-K for kinder.
Okay, great deal. Thank you so much um for, for that information. The, the onboarding piece with your instructors, uh you mentioned that they will be providing professional development. How do you anticipate, or what is your anticipation of uh the instructors being able to get on board with this and really deploy it? Do you feel that there will be some, uh, some timeframe that was Frog Street be here? Cause I noticed they only put a couple of days or something that they would be available?
Right, and those days are really spread out over uh throughout a year. Um what makes their curriculum so unique is that it's not overly complicated. It's not so cumbersome that you need a hundred days of P D just to be able to implement it. And what Dr. Sargent has strategically done is that she, she's going to gauge those days. We're gonna start the year with two or three of those days. They actually gave us a couple of days complimentary. And so we felt that this, this is what we needed. This is adequate enough for us. And what she's going to do is that we're gonna be training our teachers to train the training model. So with the number of days that we've asked for and the number of days that they're offering, we feel that it would be sufficient enough. We have some really smart pre-K teachers. And just giving them just this ongoing train, it's gonna be spread out, like I said, throughout the year. It's gonna, and we, we felt that it was sufficient enough because we really wanted to put our money into the program and not the P D because we've got some really smart pre-K teachers and we think they'll catch on very, very quickly. And with Ms. Sargent at the helm of it, and she's been very, very just hands-on with this process, we felt it was adequate.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gray, for um the assessment and, you know, your staff choosing this level of um, of, of process that would, would definitely grow our base internally, our young scholars that are moving, moving here. So thank you so much.
And I do apologize for going on. I just got past, I'm passionate about those babies.
We appreciate that, and thank you so much for what you and your staff-
Absolutely, because you know, ear, early learning.
Yes.
We cannot over, it's just crucial.
Yes ma'am.
So I'm really pleased that you're doing that uh as well, Mr. Oppenheimer.
Uh, thanks, and thanks, Dr. Webber, for bringing this. Um, you know, I know one of the things that we don't get a lot of credit for, that we go above and beyond, is our pre-K, which we don't get any help-
No help from the state.
-from the state, sadly. But the um, uh, I am curious if there's a way, because obviously in the community, there's tons of uh pre-K early childhood programs, um if it's gonna be possible to open up the training piece at least, or any aspect of this to the providers in the community. Is that feasible or down the line or anything?
We find that the smaller, more intimate professional development sessions, you get more, and you know, we have thirty pre-K classes. That's with thirty teachers and thirty assistants. And we really wanted to keep it in-house, to be honest with you. But if we decide to purchase additional professional development for the next school year, then that's definitely a possibility to extend it to uh other early childhood agencies throughout the city. But first, we, we really wanted to offer it to us and to keep it in-house.
Absolutely, and I, and I completely respect that, um, just knowing that it's such a awkward educational space when you don't get any help from the state and it's not a requirement, and we're doing it anyways, and we're going above and beyond for it, and just thinking about how we could reach more kids in the community who are also gonna be in our kindergarten classes the following year. So I appreciate that.
Very welcome, absolutely. Any other comments, questions? Those in favor? Ms. Sims? She said I, she's already said I twice. Thank you, Ms. Sims. Okay, we are now down to consent agenda items personnel.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I think we have to hit B, item B under general.
Say what? Oh.
Yes ma'am. We took B and C.
Oh, we did, we did B and C. So let's deal with B.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, the Marion Consulting Counseling Services Agreement. Uh, Dr. Mario Miller is here for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, Mr. Oppenheimer, then Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Dr. Miller, for coming on up and joining us. As I, as I mentioned earlier, I asked a lot of questions, especially as it relates to exceptional education.
Yes sir.
Um, I do have a question first, maybe for one of the attorneys, specifically, and I don't know if it would be Ms. Turner or Ms. Shepherd. Um, from my understanding from the response to the question, the day treatment center has already been created, right?
That is correct, yes.
So did we have to vote on the creation of this? Is that something that the board is supposed to vote on?
I think, and Ms. Turner can chime, um, chime in. I think all, it would be an expansion of the exceptional ed department and their uh procedures that they do, so it would not necess, necessitate, necessitate a vote for the creation of, of the day treatment program. However, in order for the day treatment program to function, then the board has to approve the mechanism to do that, and that, that mechanism before you is the contract.
Yes.
I, I think what, uh, the question, uh, tried to answer was that, yes, they have a vision, they've put it on paper, they've worked it out, but there's been no day treatment program that exists until the board approves uh the, the contract.
The contract, yes.
So if it's, so if it's an expansion, and I, I'm gonna think about this in terms of general education for a moment, if we open or close a school, are we supposed to vote on that before that happens?
If you close a school, yes, uh, the administration would bring that to the board because that would be the closure of an entire school building and function, yes.
But we didn't have to vote, like when we started the, the REAP program or um, uh, the alternative school, whenever it was created, were those things that had to be credits and, or voted on, given they were another physical space?
Right. The alternative school was actually cre, was a creature of state law, of statute. So uh we really had no choice in doing that. Uh, the REAP program, I actually can't remember if the board voted on it or not. Uh, but I would think that that would be a, a conversation that certainly would be um brought to the board at some point and has been. But I do think that this um day treatment is, is different, and perhaps I'm not explaining it as clearly as I should be. But um, as I said, it appears to be the mechanism for getting a day treatment program. And the contract is actually just the, the, the final result. And of course, if the board doesn't approve the contract, then there won't be a day treatment program.
Well, I, I guess my, my, my question is more around the physical space of where it's gonna exist, if that already exists, if that's something um that the board has to v- vote upon, say we're putting it out.
Well, I, my, my understanding is that um our job would be to make sure that the results for which this expansion is occurring actually happen. So-
That's exactly right.
If the staff says that we are expanding this, and we're going to say, what, did it happen? But I don't think that we uh should, as members, say, this is the way we want you to do it, because then otherwise we can't judge it in the end, is, is what my thinking was.
And that's why I'm specifically asking about the phys, cause I understand as a program, we don't vote on every program that happens at a school, and so that's not what I'm asking. I'm more asking, you know, and I think the concern that I raised, I think probably your fir, first meeting here was-
Yes.
-a separate space when exceptional education is a service and not a physical space. And I know we're trying to do this to ensure that we keep the students in the district and aren't sending them to Mill Creek or Carers or whatever. But what does that look like in terms of our um, our needing to approve that physical space? Because in my, in my head, and, and this is purely thinking from experience from my old uh employer, in terms of thinking about what it looks like once a new space is created where these programs are provided and students are sent there, through their I E Ps of course, but they're sent there.
And I would not, I, it would be my opinion as district council that the board would not have to approve the physical space of the day treatment program.
I'll add to that. I think Ms. Shepherd is right. Um, to the extent that she, she says that it, to some extent, I think largely it's a communication issue, and then it's a resource issue. So in terms of the resource issue, which I think is the part that definitely requires the board approval, it would be, there has to be an allocation of staff. There has to be, you know, if the, if the program is being contracted out, then within the budget, and if it's not within the budget, or even contracts that go along with that, all of that has to come to the board for your approval. So if you're gonna spend money to contract with an outside vendor, if you're going to get new space, you know, as opposed to an existing building or location that the district already owns, if they are going to displace, you know, some of the existing programs that you have, then certainly some of that might have to come to the board for approval. The, the next part of that, I think, then becomes a communication issue where it's incumbent upon the staff to provide the board the information that makes you comfortable approving that allocation of resources, such that if they bring to you a contract to say, we wanna have this vendor to provide these services, and it raises all these questions about what does the program look like? How is it gonna be staffed? Who's staffing it? Is it our staff? Are they full-time? Are they part-time? Do you need more staff? Is it all existing staff? Then quite frankly, it's incumbent upon the administration to provide you the information that you need so that whatever that allocation of existing in district resources or new resources, or substitution or transfer of resources, you're aware of it and you're comfortable with it. So that, I think, is kind of the, the board-administration relationship that becomes a communication issue so that you approve these kinds of recommendations that are brought to you.
So do we need to see that kind of a plan before we start voting on the different pieces of the plan? So, do we need to see that kind of a plan before we start voting on the different pieces of the plan?
If you want, I mean, that then becomes, you know, when these contracts are brought to you, what is the information that you want to see in order to approve it? And I would tell you, if that's what you want to see to approve that contract, then the answer is yes. If you're comfortable with the information that you have. Because I, I do recall that there had been talk about creation of a day treatment program. The question is, to the extent that, you know, you've been provided some information, to what extent are you comfortable now voting on this contract without maybe all the I's being dotted and the T's being crossed? That, that's up for the board to decide.
And so, and then this might be, I think, more directly for Dr. Miller. With this particular contract, is that, since it's a provider that's already in the district providing services, my understanding is that this agreement is specifically just for the day treatment center?
Yes, Marion Counseling already exists in the schools. We're just contracting out to get those additional resources, as our council has said, to the therapeutic resources that we do not have for this specific group of students in this facility. So, it's just the therapeutic services that we're actually asking for your approval on, yes, sir.
And, and no other pieces of the particular day treatment center have we voted on? So, staffing, any of that stuff?
No, sir. No, sir.
And just for clarification, Ms. Oppenheimer, it is an amendment to your existing agreement with Marion Counseling.
It extends that one by either a two-year or three-year period and it adds the day treatment program.
Yes.
Does that satisfy, Ms. Oppenheimer?
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts are, and my colleagues, you could definitely disagree with me. I'm very uncomfortable voting for something to add into the, to a day treatment center that we haven't seen, at least a vision. And again, a lot of this comes from experienced skepticism about breakaway programs. And that's not, and I, and I get the reason, I don't want to debunk the reason and the importance of why we do these things. But because of historical experience and concern about having a separate treatment, especially around exceptional education, you know, causes me a great deal of pause, especially if we don't, haven't seen the T's and the I's dotted and whatnot before we start putting the pieces together.
Is this, Dr. Gray, is this contract something that we need to do very soon or like now?
Well, we want to make, Madam President, Board of Trustees, to your question, Madam President, and to your concern, Mr. Oppenheimer, we want to make sure that you're comfortable with it before moving forward. It is not out of our purview to sharpen up the entire planning process. It has been discussed on a couple of occasions, you all can recall that on last, especially on the last couple of updates from special ed. Dr. Miller can do just that. He can make the presentation a lot like we did the Rowan Achievement School and the other adjustments that middle school and high schools have made in alignment, the whole academies. We can do that for you. I don't know the answer to the question about the expediency of this, Dr. Miller.
We do have students.
Yes.
Who present serious behavioral issues that need therapeutic services right away.
Sure.
And it is, it is a high priority that we get this done.
Question would be, to provide those services, we would have to continue with the external providers we have so far.
That's exactly right.
Which require another year of contract agreement, is that correct? Is there some, and we have to do that by the time school starts, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
So, you know, what I don't want to do is cause some bit, just, make distraction on this. And I think that we could probably, we have a meeting coming in two weeks for the board to consider that. I think in all fairness of, of that, I think we may, may want to do it that way. Because what I don't want to do is proceed with our council's direction, which is going to require some conversation.
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly.
So, Mr. Jones?
All right, thank you. With this new area that we're going to be undertaking, that, how has the current service that's been provided? Will better position us, particularly as we go into this audit that we have coming up? That's the first question. The second question is, as you just stated, with these different level or, or should I say, what is it? Stages that these children find themselves in? How are you, or how will this new agreement with this therapeutic intervention position these, our staff, limited as it is, to be in line with transitioning from a tier-one to a tier-two to a tier-three and still keeping our IEPs in line where they need to be? Which already been stated that we have to go back, back through our files to bring them back up to the day, because you have to check all of them.
Yes.
That's the second question. Thank you.
Well, primarily what we need to do to just shore up everything that we need for our next, our upcoming visit is to have everything in place that is compliant as far as serving our students with exceptional needs and primarily those students who present serious behavioral challenges in our schools. Going back to your question that you stated earlier, that you asked earlier, about how have we, have those students performed in our outside facilities? Well, they performed okay. But, you know, it's because we have other schools, other school districts in the state who have operated their own day treatment centers, some of comparable size to our district, and done it successfully for many years. I think it's only fair that in, in best, in the best financial interest of our district that we, we go out and we try to seek those same services for our students here in our district, you know, within the borders of our district.
Yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Miller, Madam President, Board of Trustees. I think also to be noted that the state is now beginning to fund less and less.
Very much less, yes.
For this type of service for us.
Yes.
I think we can bring this back in two weeks if it's okay with the, with the board.
Members.
And we'll have all the information you need at that time.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I, I was asking how would this relationship, not getting into the particulars of, you know, operation. That's not my role. But my question is too, will this new, will this position here, position you to be able to work through the IEPs?
Yes.
And also move those students who are at tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three? Will this better able you to do that job?
Oh, yes. The tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three is on the, on the side of the multi-tier systems of support, which is the RTI process.
Right.
Yes, they're, they're going to, we're going to actually be able to better serve those students behaviorally and academically. And then as they move up, if they have other problems that, that exist, we'll be able to serve those students, for those students who qualify for special education and have the EMD ruling, we can better serve them, you know, we have, there's a level of continuum. And when they get to this level, we'll be able to serve them as well within our district and save the district a significant amount of money in doing so.
We'll talk about the money when we get off the pickwork in line. But the next question I have is in line with what you're saying. Will this also position your staff or your, the parties? The principal, the counselor, the generate special ed, the parent? Everybody be better able to understand where that child is as they matriculate through the continuum?
Oh, yes, sir. There are different stages, as I say, the continuum. And all of our certified staff, we know where our children are and how they perform, both academic and behaviorally. So, as far as meeting their needs and providing them a free and appropriate public education, everyone will be better suited in serving those students.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Dr. Leonard, you have any comments?
And Dr. Gray's always answered part of it. And I guess what I was going to mention to Dr. Gray, if in the future that when there's an amendment or if there's something that we've already spoken about and we come back to the table with something as, as this event, then maybe we need to have something in writing that, that we could see that this may be an addendum to what we, what we already have. Anytime there is a change in a contract, we have to see that anyhow, I would think. So, it would just make it easier for us. One of the things that I like about what Dr. Gray do is that when we see that, he often tie it back into the why it goes. And so, we can kind of see where he's heading with that. I kind of like to see that happen on, on anything like that as well.
Yes, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Lynn, we include those things in the executive summary. We'll make sure to double line or highlight it for you, but very good point, Madam Sir.
So, thank you. We will have these at our next meeting. Okay.
Madam President, we have agenda, consent agenda item C remaining.
I will entertain a motion for approval of agenda item C under consent agenda items general. It's been moved in second that we adopt agenda, consent agenda items C. Comments, question, Ms. Oppenheimer?
Uh, thanks, Madam President. I'm not sure who to ask, but understanding that this is the chart, abstinence plus curriculum agreement. Oh, hi, Ms. Evans, how are you? Are the numbers, and I appreciate the, the numbers that were sent, is that the numbers of students at those schools or is that the number of students who participated?
Well, the way the chart program is formatted, parents have the opportunity to opt-out. They have to do that in writing. Most of our parents don't do that.
Opt-in or opt-out? My understanding, it's an opt-in program.
They opt, they opt-in. And over the last, this program has been in effect for three years. And it has evolved over time. And so, the last two years, our counselors have, have been the ones providing the direct instruction to the students. The first-year schools could choose the people who implemented their program. And so, our schools are asked every year at the beginning of the year, just like we do with our state and federal programs, to have a parent meeting to discuss the chart program and to encourage them to participate in the program, especially since it deals primarily, especially in sixth and seventh grade, with good decision-making. And so, most of our parents do support this, this program. And I, this year I happened to get to be one of those parents. And so, I got to see it from a different side about how it really works and how it can benefit our students.
Uh, thank you for that. And but the, so the numbers that we were sent in response to the question about numbers, are those the numbers of total students at the school or students who participated?
According to Dr. Holland's information, it was the number of students who participated.
Okay, great. And so, then is this something that is modifiable for high school students who didn't receive it when they're in middle school because it is a fairly new curriculum? If we've only been doing it for three years, I'd imagine like the juniors and seniors of high school haven't received any such curriculum?
Now, this curriculum is specifically designed for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And there are different lessons based upon the age group of these students. So, it may be more appropriate to select a different, a different abstinence plus program if you're going to move it to the high school level. But they address different issues based on the developmental appropriateness for, for the age of our scholars. And so, again, I don't think that it could easily translate to high school. There may need to be a selection process specifically designed for those scholars.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, uh, so I, I personally, you know, the legislature had a missed opportunity to greatly improve this law and turn it into a comprehensive sex education. But I would be curious to know, and this, I don't know, actually, this might even be a Dr. Webber question in terms of after-school and 21st century. Is it, if we wanted to, and I don't know how this would work with the law, if we wanted to, could we be doing comprehensive sex education in our after-school programming? If the, we found the resources or the support, given that it's a federal funding?
I'm actually, we're actually not sure about that. We, we would have to check it out.
I'd be really curious to know if that's possible. Just thinking about personally knowing providers of comprehensive sex education that would, I'm sure, jump at the opportunity to be able to provide it. And I would imagine 21st century being a federal program, if there's a way to. So, I would love to, you know, if there's an opportunity to get some research on that.
So, we as a district made a choice to do abstinence plus as opposed to some of the other options that were available. And so, do we do that, make that declaration every year? Or do we maintain the earlier decision?
The district, to my knowledge, could choose to go in a different direction. But I think at this time, it was a statewide debate because it was new.
Right.
And I believe in the wisdom of the board at that time and the superintendent at that time, they decided to go with something that parents would be most comfortable with as we segue to this form of education. And again, it's very beneficial over the last three years and giving our staff an opportunity to become adjusted to it. But it talks about just sound decision-making. If somebody wants to cheat off your test, how do you handle it in the sixth grade? We don't address anything with sex or sexually transmitted diseases until the eighth grade under the current abstinence plus program. So, I believe it was appropriate for the time, considering the climate in our state regarding sex education.
I agree. I remember the conversations, I know you do too, Jed, around abstinence, abstinence plus, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah.
It's just a shame because neither of them are best practice, you know, educationally and with young people to do abstinence or abstinence plus, but in fact, do comprehensive sex education.
Yes. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Thank you for what you do for us. You mentioned in your comments that this program has been evolving. Based on your review of, over the years, how has it better positioned our teachers or instructors or administrators that enter this program? How is it better positioned then? And then what has been the results of those students who have come through this over three-year period, which again, would be a middle school, you know, track? Where are they and how are you or tracking those that come to the program and say whether or not this is?
Effective or not?
Exactly.
One of the things, the Health Department of Health does not quantify the number of teenage pregnancies. They, they will provide that data at the end of this school year, but just from soft data, from reports. Three years ago, or before three years ago, I believe there was discussion among principals, what do we do about this issue of teenage pregnancy happening so young at the middle school, level-sixth grade at many schools? That's not a part of our discussion anymore. So, I believe that's a point of celebration. In terms of the decision-making, the first year of implementation, principals could choose people to implement the program. Most people chose science teachers or other staff members. Last year, one, last year was the second year. Two years ago, we started using our counselors so that they can provide direct instruction to students in the classroom. So, they go into the classrooms with a schedule. Some grade levels have six weeks or seven weeks or eight weeks. It's different for each grade level. And they get to have conversations with students that sometimes they don't get to have at home. It's a safe environment for students to ask questions. Although they don't talk about sex specifically, they can better equip students to ask the appropriate questions at home until we get to those lessons that are more developmentally appropriate in the eighth grade. So, I find it very beneficial. I am aware of the AIDS data and I think, Ms. Oppenheimer, Dr. Gray and I have been in meetings with other medical providers and talking about what's, what's the best course of action to address that for some of our scholars differently. But I just think this is something that needs a little bit more research. The chart program is one that's free. We used to get federal funds for safe and healthy schools that we no longer receive anymore. So, this is one that, that there's no roadblock to us implementing it because it is free and it's supported by the Mississippi Department of Health. And they also help come out and train our staff. So, it has been a resource for our schools.
Great, thank you. Dr. Gray, with the added level of, of attention that counselors are having to be engaged with as it relates to the matriculation of our students through, do you feel this is the most, the best appropriate, you know, to continue to have this on a council since there's some other things that, that, with MBE as well as education overall is really diving into? So, would this be the most, I guess, how do you feel about this going forward?
Madam President, Board of Trustees? Madam President, Board of Trustees, very good question, Mr. Jones. Quite frankly, I think counselors embrace this because this is what they want to do. And they want to be able to engage with our scholars about the issues that counselors are trained to handle. Professional school counselors do a wonderful job of walking our young people through these kinds of issues that are quite frankly uncomfortable for some parents, some administrators, and the only other ones who have somebody to go to are those who are in athletic programs and they can talk to coaches. But the scholars really need someone they can talk freely to, and I believe counselors embrace this.
Okay, and so your counselors are getting the necessary training through this program to better enable them to be more efficient and effective in this process of encouraging, motivating, and deterring?
Absolutely, and what I found is that councils are, they want to be with the students, and they are so excited about it that many of them partner with our health providers throughout the city. They schedule health fairs at the culmination of this chart program. They work with other providers to do monthly visits like Jackson Heinz Comprehensive Health. So it makes them excited to be more a part of the day-to-day operations of instruction. And as a part of the council's evaluation, they are required to perform this kind of direct instruction, but it's a requirement that they enjoy. They want to touch the lives of those students, so I see positive results.
Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you again, Madam Gray.
We have a motion in a second. Yes, ma'am?
Those in favor? Thank you. Okay.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, consent agenda items personnel.
Entertain a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items personnel, Mr. Oppenheimer?
I greatly apologize to my colleagues. I wanted to pull aside D-15. D is in Delta fifteen.
Any others? It's not time for you to go yet, Mrs. I know.
Mr. Oppenheimer, for clarity, is D as in Delta, sir?
Yes, D-15. So a motion to approve consent agenda items personnel with exception of D-15. Those in favor? Ms. Sims? Thank you. All right. Okay, so, is that a personnel?
It's a personnel, ma'am.
Okay. All right, Dr. Gray, anything else for the good of the order?
Yes, ma'am, just a couple of other business items. I wanted to provide our board members with a, I think, a very high-quality teacher recruitment video. This was a culmination of one of our while improving projects, and it is extremely, extremely good. So I want to celebrate our media public, showing what you stand, please, sir. And Bonita's there, Forrest, Larry, Mr. George. So please, please, it's 15 minutes, but please, please watch it because in about a week, it's going to be, I'm going to be all over the city with it. I want to give you an opportunity. It's also probably linked on YouTube or something, but I'm old-fashioned, if a disc is old-fashioned. Secondly, I wanted to make sure that I invited you this year. Every year, we have a school, we have a Jackson Public School Leadership Institute. And so instead of flying all over the country, we have our own conference here. It is led by yours truly, and all of the chief academic officers and executive directors make presentations. And so I wanted to make sure I personally invited you to come. It's next week, all next week, so come any day, anytime, and you will see our chief academic officers, executive directors, deputy superintendent, and chief of staff engaging our staff. And this, Monday at 8:30 is the impact of poverty, and I'll be leading that one. That same afternoon, the Coalition of Schools Educating Boards of Color will also be doing a presentation to engage our Boards of Color initiative in our district. So they have your name on them, so I have to just kind of hand them to you, but if you don't mind, if we take yours and pass it around.
Let's see. We still have Dr. Othbert Jr.
Can't let him go.
We're going to wait him to come anyway. Thank you, Dr. Gray.
Indeed, and still, the last other business is, please look forward to the new iteration of the code of conduct. We're still reviewing that.
Wonderful. Yes.
Yes, thanks, members. I just had a maybe quick couple of questions about district business. With the audit, are we going to get some kind of very clear, like, timeline? Here's who, and I know you gave the overview at the last meeting of who's in charge of what, but I would love to see a timeline, very specific.
Absolutely, without a doubt. We are working very diligently on completing that process. You will get it before it goes out to MBE.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question, Madam President, is board elections. From my understanding, we're supposed to?
You're actually supposed to do them today, board members.
Well, so that would be my question. Are we doing them today? Is that something that we have to put on the agenda and physically put it on the agenda?
I would suggest you probably would. You're under your policy, I'd say you would do it this time. There's, to the extent it's just a matter of board operations, I don't think, you know, there's just this critical issue that you do it today, but I would say certainly very soon, just to stay close to compliance with your policy. You would want to take that up.
So maybe at the next meeting? Do we have any sense of when we might get a new member? Have you heard anything?
As a matter of fact, I spoke with the mayor today. I think that this evening, as a matter of fact, I think at 6 o'clock, they were entertaining a candidate. So we should know something soon.
Wonderful. So members, next week, at the next board meeting, I assume, next? Is that all right with everyone? Yes?
Just to piggyback off of colleague, thank you, Madam President. Colleague asked about this, the audit and so on. Will we be able to have a, how are we going to approach, you know, your plan about how we're approaching this? What format were you going to use for that? As it relates to the board?
Okay, so we've invited you all to come in and take a deep dive into the way we are addressing it. We're putting a corrective action plan together, and as soon as that plan is put together, then we will present it to you, and then it'll go to MBE.
Do you have all the parts you need to address this?
Well, we wanted all the feedback we could get, especially from you all. And if you want to send that or come back, you know, we've extended that invitation to you. We'd be happy to receive it and include it. We have assigned district personnel to oversee every one of those standards. So for all intents and purposes, we are, we have made every provision to make sure we have everything we need.
Okay, with the district personnel that you have, based on, you provided to us, are they in position to address these concerns that we find because? The reason I ask that is the concerns were there before, and we want to make sure that we have whatever, at least I, as a board member, and my colleagues too, ensure that we have the appropriate format to get these actions, or these deficiencies corrected.
Some of them, Mr. Jones, were deficiencies created under leadership that are no longer with us. But the people who are in charge of those standards right now are decision-makers. They report to myself and the deputy superintendent. So everybody knows the sense of urgency surrounding this. There's no doubt about that. I've had meetings with office managers, principals, and direct reports. There's nobody that doesn't know how serious this is, and there's no one that's not responding. Yes, sir.
Everybody's on board?
Everybody's on board, and I, once again, extend another invitation to all members of the board to come in at any time so we can sit down and walk you through our process so that you will be comfortable with that. But absolutely, the door is wide open.
I guess, I would, Madam President, if there is a work session that we will have as a collective board to be a part of, or be, I would love to hear that piece of it, you know what I'm saying? If that's how it's going to be. You know, in terms of dropping in, you know, that's kind of a, you know.
Are you suggesting, well, I?
Under your direction, whatever direction.
Let me say this. And let me start a little back. First of all, we've heard people talk about the audit, and let's be clear, this is an organizational audit as opposed to a financial audit. Because when people talk about audits, they immediately think that there's something, this is an organizational audit of our system, of selected schools within our system. And it's not reflective of our entire system, but it's a snapshot in time of various issues. And let's also know that this is the first time that this kind of an audit has occurred. And it happened legislatively a couple of years ago, whenever the Mississippi Legislature passed the law that said every school that had CD and F, I think, would have to have this kind of an audit. So this is the first time for us, and it's not a financial audit. It is an organizational audit. And so we want to be clear on that. And clearly, as I read the audit, there are a number of issues that I think that all of us will be addressing, including board members. Because as I read it, and I own it as a board member, and the responsibility thereof. And so I think we ought to look at that portion of it very closely so that we too can adhere to all of the requirements that we as citizen board members have to do. And I got to tell you, there are a few things in there that I am sure surprised all of us. But you know what? The process is that we will honor them, and we will take care of them, and we will go forward with them. I think, my own opinion is that because we are citizen board members, then we have to make sure that the experts who are our schools leader, who are our school leaders, take the lead on that. And I think that we then clearly have the responsibility to make sure that their responses make sense to us and that we collectively agree to them. And I see that as our responsibility. That's why I think it's really important that we sit with somebody or CAO who's responsible for, say, high school. I'd sit with Dr. Murray or whoever team that is with the question that you have so that you can see how they're addressing them. Clearly, as members who have other jobs every day, we're just not equipped to go into the finite details of what's required to bring that back up to speed. But we have the responsibility to make sure that the processes that Dr. Gray and team are using make sense to us because we're ultimately responsible for it. So I think that we can probably proceed that way, Dr. Gray. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Jones?
It does.
So that we can all be satisfied that we've done due diligence from the board all the way down through the process? Yes, Mr. Oppenheimer?
Thanks for that, Madam President. And I think, and maybe on to Mr. Jones's point and my point and your point, is because one of our few levers of power and governance is making sure there's clear timelines that we're following up and whatnot, we do want to show a sense of, and I know it's urgency for me, and I know it's urgency for all of us, but we only have a few levers. And so I think that's where the urgency of, we want to see how clearly, how forcefully, et cetera, et cetera, that we're moving forward, even on the pieces that we absolutely disagree with, right? That we're making that clear. And so that's, I think, where, definitely where I'm coming from. I imagine that's where.
Absolutely, and that's exactly right. I think there would be no argument with that because, you know, any reflection of anybody is a reflection of us all. And we all want to make sure that we do exactly what we are required to do and to make sure that our school progresses well. So I would hope that you take advantage of that.
And let me just add this. Just for, I guess, clarity. At this stage, there's nothing more important to me than clearing this audit. Every member of the staff, every school principal, every office manager, every executive director and CAO, there is nobody who is not bending over backwards to make sure that this is done. And I want to articulate, I want to say that out loud so that you know. We're working very, very hard to make sure this gets done. I'm with Mr. Oppenheimer, there's some things that I do not agree with, that I think that were very subjective. However, I can't do a whole lot of public commenting until we present the MBE with an official response because the last couple of districts that got in the same position found themselves in a whole lot of mess because everybody started talking when nobody really knew all of the things that was going on. That's the reason that we, you know, we would, we'd be happy to do a work session with you when we pull it all together. But in between that now and then, for you to get some context of what we're doing, I would enjoy, especially if you have specific questions about things that are happening in particular areas, that I think that you would really benefit from coming and having a conversation about what that looks like. You hadn't seen me do a whole lot of response to press, et cetera, because it's not, it's really not time for that in terms of specifics. But, Mr. Jones, I know that you are concerned, and I am three times as concerned, sir, that this gets done. So we are working very hard to make sure it does. And it'll be, it'll be, here's the issue, here's the response, the person responsible for it, and the timeline, and the technical assistance being requested by the state. All of that's going to be outlined. And then when we've cleared one, we'll call them, they'll come check, and hopefully check it out, move on to the next one. That's the plan. I can't be, I mean, I really can't be more clear than this is very, 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 this is the highest priority for us.
You know, and for our community, the process is that one of the things about any audit, and not just for Jackson Public Schools, but for any organization, is that there's always an audit. There might be findings, but there's always an opportunity for corrective action. And so the whole idea behind corrective action is for you to put your best case forward as to why a particular finding should be adjusted, or should be removed, or should be corrected. And so that's the great thing about our being able to do this. And so what we're doing, we have been audited, we have some findings, we're doing corrective actions, we are going to submit it to MBE. MBE in turn will get back with us regarding our corrective actions. And then we'll know from there where we go. But it's just want to be very transparent, Dr. Gray, with the community to know there is a process. And it's not just for public schools, but it's for anybody who's ever been audited about anything, that there are opportunities to respond toward and to correct. Okay? Anything else for the good of the order? Consideration for a, to hold an executive session?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we consider holding an executive session. Those in favor? Oh, no. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening.